Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Time is now 9:45 and a quarm of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of April 12th, 2011 is called to order. First item is the approval of agenda and order of priority.
So moved this way.
Supported by Eileen. Any discussion, changes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Marilyn Mertz?
Good morning.
Never tell what she wants to be referred to.
I don't care. My nickname's Mertz. My real name's Marilyn. You call me whatever you will. I'd like to introduce you to the State Board of Education and thank all of our guests and staff for being here. The Chairman of the Board, just to my immediate left, is Michael Flanagan. He's also the Superintendent of Public Instruction. To his left is John Austin. John's the President of the Board and he resides in Ann Arbor. To his left is Cassandra Albridge, the Vice President of the Board from Rochester Hills. To her left Nancy Danhoff from East Lansing. She's the Secretary of the Board. Kathleen Strauss. She lives in Detroit, she's a member of the Board. And to Kathleen's left is Matenga Ragatz. She's a teacher in Grand Ledge Public Schools, World Studies. She's the Teacher of the Year for this year and she has a seat at the Board table. If we go across the table, you will see Eileen Weiser, who resides in Ann Arbor. Dan Varner is the seat just to the left of Eileen. He's unable to join us today. He is from Detroit. The next person at the table is Richard Diley. He is from Detroit and he is the National Association of State Boards of Education Delegate for our State Board of Education. And next to me is Mary Ann McGuire. She's the Treasurer of the Board and she resides in Detroit. Thank you.
We have some exciting presentations today, I think, and I think all of these have been requested by the Board at some point. And in agenda planning, we agreed that today was the day to try to give those. And the first one we're really excited about, before I bring my colleagues down, what we're calling it is Schools That Are Beating the Odds. And this is an attempt to really show that there are schools from different factions within the state, different kinds of demographics, different geography, that in spite of, as an extreme example, in spite of high free lunch counts, for example, are doing very well. And we wanted to give them a shout out. And also by highlighting some of these, we think it's a way that other districts and other schools can touch base with them, figure out what it is they're doing in order to so-called beat the odds. So we're going to profile a representative sample of a few schools that are beating the odds based on a comparison of two studies. Joseph's going to talk a little bit more about this, but you'll see, if I could describe this in lay terms, you know how Newsweek and I think US News and World Report do college rankings? The way we thought about this was to have two different methodologies and then look at those that made both lists. And so that kind of even narrows it down more. Our intent is to release both lists when they're done so that people can say, they kind of beat the odds with both methodologies, and I'll let my colleagues speak to that in a moment. But we wanted to highlight at least a few of those that made both lists and with a wide variety of backgrounds, as I said. Schools should really be proud to be on either one of these lists, but these are really the ones that we wanted the Board to understand and see the most. Because these are the ones, frankly, that are really beating the odds. If you've made both lists, you're really beating the odds. So if Sally, Joseph, and Vanessa would join me, and I think Vanessa and Joseph both almost walked back from Atlanta yesterday. Last I knew it, 1:00 in the morning, you weren't going to make it. What was your, did you get in by?
I got in at 1:30.
Okay. Well, we're happy you're here. Because we weren't postponing.
Well, I was just going to put Vanessa a little bit more in the hot seat.
Right. And so I'll turn it over to Sally for...
Oh, well, and I really don't have a whole lot more to add from what Mike said, so I think you'll be, you'll find this interesting. Vanessa and her staff followed up with the schools and actually interviewed to find out what their perception is of why they were beating the odds. So I think you'll find this interesting. Joseph?
So first, I wanted to say a lot of assessment and accountability folks who helped out with this, Stevie J., Dong Seo, Shichi Hao, Vanessa, and then we have a list of people who also did over 40 interviews with schools over the last two days, which is quite a bit. So we had Carla Oladeth, Alex Schwartz, Janet Lauer, Phil Chase, Jim Griffiths, Chris Janzer, and Martha Caswell. So we had, this was a significant undertaking. And I just wanted to make sure that we thank the people who really spent a lot of time doing this. So we decided to identify schools beating the odds really in two ways. First, we designed a study, and we also sought assistance from an outside respected expert to design a second study so that we would be able to say, it's not just a statistical artifact that a school shows up on one of these studies. They show up on both of these studies. And so we ran the two separate studies using considerably different methodologies. First, we identified schools that were performing above their predicted level based on risk factors. And then we identified schools performing above a comparison group of the 30 most demographically similar schools in the state. So those are two really significantly different methodologies, and we ended up identifying schools as beating the odds for this presentation only if they were identified in both studies as beating the odds. And we really wanted to do that so we'd have a strong basis for concluding that these schools really are beating the odds. We will be releasing both studies again, simply to provide the analysis and transparency on exactly what we did. So Study Number One, we did identify 63 schools that were outperforming the predicted performance based on their risk factors. And then Study Number Two, we identified 72 schools that were outperforming their peer group, the most demographically similar peer group in the state. Combined, we had 26 schools that were identified by both studies. These 26 schools represented schools that both outperformed their predicted outcomes and outperformed most demographically similar schools in the state. MDE staff reviewed the identified schools to eliminate schools that had selective admissions or gifted and talented programs simply because you would expect that they might be outperforming simply because of being selected. This did result in 20 total schools, so six of those 26 that were on both were selective admissions, gifted and talented magnet schools. So this did result in 20 total schools statewide meeting all the criteria, and 18 elementary schools, one middle school, and one high school ended up on the list. So MDE staff did select seven schools to profile for this meeting, five elementary schools, one middle school, and one high school. The full list of 61, 72, 26, and 20 will be available publicly on the web later this week, as will the methodology that we actually used for each of the studies. So Vanessa, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. Like Joseph said, once we identified the seven, well, actually, the full 20 are being interviewed right now, but once we identified the 20 who met both criteria, we wanted to contact them to have, to both give them a chance to respond and tell us what they think that they're doing that is a contributing factor to their beating the odds. And also to check some of our assumptions on the reasonableness of their identification. So to ask questions like, do you have selective admissions criteria that might not be immediately apparent on a website or something. So we developed a short interview protocol. It was geared toward both the building level principal, in most cases our instructional leader, district superintendent, or other curriculum instructional leader, and ISD superintendent. And that's why, as Joseph mentioned, that we've completed about 40 over two days, so that we've gotten in contact with a lot of them. And all the staff followed the same protocol so that similar questions were asked of each school. And I will just note that these are kind of, what we're going to show you is their impressions of their performance and why they're beating the odds, not necessarily trying to make some generalizations about what everybody should do to beat the odds, but we wanted them to have a chance to have their voice be part of this presentation.
So when you see something for each of the schools, we have a title slide for each school, giving the school name, district name, and the ISD name. A demographic slide for each school that essentially identifies what is their peer group that they're being compared to, and an outcome slide for each school, and then a four- or six-year trend for each school based on MME and MEAT scores. So our first school is Pastor Elementary School in Detroit. Here is their demographics. It's a little small because we have a lot of information that we have to get into, but their comparison groups are essentially large city, K-5 to K-8 elementary schools. And we get that from, in this, on the very top, 100 percent of their peer group is from large cities. If you look at the grade configuration down below, they are a K-6 school, and all of the schools either have a K-5, K-6, K-7, or K-8. So they do have similar schools that they're being compared to. And then down below, you can see some of the, some more of the demographics, their state foundation allowance, their enrollment numbers, the percent minority, the percent economic disadvantage, the percent students with disabilities, and the percent limited English proficient. So we get a sense of what are the parameters against which they're identifying, we're identifying the schools that are most demographically similar. So this is their comparison group.
Joseph, may I just, can you clarify also that you took out schools that weren't kind of like regular neighborhood schools?
Right. So these magnet schools that would be gifted and talented programs that would, you know, essentially beat the odds simply because the odds are stacked in the favor by selective admission processes.
This is a regular geographic neighborhood school in Detroit?
This is, yes. So if you look at this, the average top-to-bottom ranking of the schools in their peer group was 13, theirs was 19. Now, this school likely would have been identified as interim accredited, but interim accredited is doing better than the schools that it is being compared to. And again, we talked about interim accredited being accreditation on an interim basis. It is not, would not be an accredited school. If you look at the MEAT data, the comparison group, their mean scores are quite a bit lower than the mean scores for this school. For example, 86 versus 65 in percent proficiency in mathematics for this school versus the peer group. And one other thing I wanted to add, we only identified schools as outperforming their peer group if they performed better than all of the schools in their peer group, and statistically significantly higher than the schools in their peer group. So it is a pretty selective criterion for being a school that beats the odds here. And if you look at their MEAT data for 2010, so we've got the 2009 and 2010 data here, they are quite a bit above. And one of the things that we see that is really striking with all of the elementary schools, not only do they have high achievement compared to their peer group, but their achievement is really high in writing compared to their peer group. I think this is really important because the writing test was new this last year. It's not something that they've had practice in being able to do, do well on writing, on the MEAT test, because it's a new test. And so that really pops out to me, that this is a new test and they're doing really well even on this new test. It's not just on the things where they've been able to take the MEAT test year, year over year over year, it's this new test they're doing well on as well. So for example, for this school, 16 percent were proficient in their peer group. This school had 61 percent proficient, 61 percent proficient on writing, a pretty significant outcome. So Vanessa, do you want to talk about what we learned from the interview?
Yep. So down the left, you can see several bullets that summarize what their responses were, what this pastor's responses were regarding what makes them a school, or what they think makes them a standout school. I won't read them all to you because they're up there, but I think the three highlights from here, they really spoke a lot about how they have a focus on all students and a culture of respect for all students, and learning matters for all students, recognizing the silent scholars, you know, the kids who do well and maybe don't get noticed in other ways, but trying to ensure that everybody gets the attention that they need. They spoke a lot about their collaborative relationships, both between staff, between staff and students, and then between the school and the community, and that that was a strength that they felt helped them achieve. And then the third kind of overriding factor was this community involvement, that the parents and community members want to be in the school, that they're there, they volunteer, they continue coming back. And they, that was, that was a strength the school really was proud of.
So I do want to add one other thing that we've heard several times about this, was that they have been adopted by their alumni association. Their alumni association comes in and works really strongly with this.
Are you one of those, Lindy?
No.
And Sally did remind me of one other thing about the writing. The new writing assessment is the only assessment we have in which our cut scores are essentially aligned to college if we're ready or being on track. So you will notice that the scores in writing are lower than the other scores. That's because we have the cut scores in writing that are much more rigorous.
But it also speaks even more to the schools that are beating the odds, that with that college readiness, cut score, they're still beating the odds. So it's pretty impressive.
Could you, Pastor?
Yes? I'm sorry?
How many students are there?
Their full enrollment is 357 this last year.
357?
Yes.
That tells you something, too. It's a small school.
And its peer group was about a 460.
It would seem to me, too, that the higher writing scores tell me that they, on their own, because they believed it, valued writing, and put that into the curriculum heavily so that without having to feel like, well, we have to because there's a test there. You don't make those kinds of games in several months.
No, and one other thing, as Marty sent out an alert yesterday, so we may have more visitors online than we typically would, because we thought it would be good for folks in the field to zero in on this presentation. We hope they always look in, but this is one. And the reason I mention it is, I said to our guys yesterday that if I had been a local superintendent again, and I had, was working with 35 schools, we had schools in the full spectrum. I had 80, 90 percent free lunch in one part of the district and had virtually no free lunch in another part of the district. And by watching this, I went through and tried to do this in my head, and I'm encouraging those watching to maybe think about it this way, that you could match up, I could have matched up every school in that district, all 35 of them, to one of these as a sister school with the same demographics. And I would have been, I guess, encouraging the principal and the staff to say, let's interact with that one that's beating the odds if we weren't one of them, and what is it that they're doing? And let's spend, because one of the problems with the PDs that we often do come sit and get for one day is you're not really dealing with folks that have the same circumstances that you have. So I guess what I'm encouraging those that are watching in is there are schools up here that would match virtually every school in this state. And if they're beating the odds, I'd encourage you to try to match up to which one is that school that's similar to yours. And as I said, the schools I was working with, 35 of them, were all over the spectrum, but would have been able to match up and work directly with, start talking to, interacting with the staff at that school. This is ultimately about what teachers are doing with their students in these schools and with principal leadership. So, you know, in that sense, I think this is a tremendous learning opportunity, I guess, for schools around the state.
It's interesting, when they were building new schools in Detroit, they built them for 1,100 students.
That right?
Elementary schools?
Elementary schools.
Wow.
Which, to me, didn't make any sense, and this sort of confirms it, that this was a smaller school.
Well, one school that's confirmed, I think, is your education.
No, because when I go to the Brooklyn schools, they're split sides.
Yeah.
And they're different, because 1,100 kids in a school.
This peer group, you said, was about 400, so I think it's...
Right.
I also think we saw in the interviews that there was, it wasn't necessarily always a small school effect, but the ability to personalize education and interact with students. And sometimes that's easier in a small school, but certainly smaller numbers of students won't automatically get you there. So they spoke a lot about the...
That's the advantage, right.
Yeah, the chance to do that. It was more the interaction with students.
There is one thing I do want to clarify. I did talk about the 19, putting that school in the interim accredited status under MISAS. I just wanted to clarify that MISAS is still going through the approval process. The accreditation system.
Yes, sir. What is the average class size in this school?
That is something that we did not get through the interview at this point.
Well, we don't, it's not something that we collect currently in our statewide data systems. It will be soon, this year, we'll be able to know that. And we didn't specifically ask about it in the interviews. We just asked, what do you think? And so some schools did say, well, you know, we have a good, and you'll see this, we have a good staff to student ratio, that allows us to personalize, that allows us to individualize, to differentiate. But we didn't specifically use that as a factor.
So the last slide that we have for each is the trend data that we have for the school. So you can see the trend data is generally improving over time for the school, and improving actually quite, quite a bit over time. Our next school is Mount Hope School in Lansing Public School District, New York ISD. Their comparison group is K-5 or K-6 schools in mid-sized cities. Their state fiscal, their state foundation allowance is around 7,900, their enrollment is around 3,500 of their comparison group. Minority rates around 74 percent, economic disadvantage around 85 percent, students with disabilities around 17 percent, and a few LEP students in the school. Oh, I'm sorry. Enrollment around 350 rather than 3,500. Thank you, Sally.
That's a big elementary.
That's a big elementary.
They brought them down to Detroit, those big schools, right? And then come back?
Right.
So the things that pop out here are that they are above, significantly above their peer groups in every category. And the one that kind of pops up that we've talked about before is that their peer group had a mean top-to-bottom ranking of 15, whereas this school had a 68. And that correlates with everything else that you see here. Vanessa, do you want to talk about this?
This school also spoke extensively about their focus on differentiating instruction to student needs, and they specifically mentioned the response to intervention initiative, and how that was, they really credited that with some of their success. They also felt that their data analysis was a real strength, and they used data to help them do this instructional differentiation. And finally, they had, they praised their staff extensively. They've got a strong and stable staff who collaborate with each other and collaborate with the community. And again, they mentioned, this was another school that mentions community involvement, that there's, there's this interaction between what goes on in the school and what goes on outside the school that they felt was a critical factor for their success.
Yes?
Maybe, perhaps I missed this when you were talking, but is there a reason why we don't have a social studies proficiency for 2010?
Yes, because this school did not test enough this last year in social studies to get, to have that. We limit it to 30 or more.
Okay, so they just don't have that many kids that were available for testing, is that it?
Right. So their sixth grade cohort would have been slightly too small.
Got it. Thank you.
So here are their trend data over time. Our next one is an Upper Peninsula school, Edie Holman Elementary School in Stanton Township, Copper Country ISD. This school has variable, really has variable grade configurations in a distant rural area with K-5 being an upper one. This is actually a K-8 school, and in rural areas, there are all kinds of different configurations on the elementary, in particular, in the rural areas. But their state foundation allowance is around 7,350, enrollment around 300, minority around 5 percent, pretty high economic disadvantage rates, relatively average students with disabilities rates, and no limited English proficient students. What we see, again, we can come to pretty good conclusions that indeed they are outperforming their peer groups. Again, the mean top-to-bottom ranking for this was 44, theirs was 73. We're talking about an 82 percent in proficient in science to the peer group, 94 for this group, and so on, for this school, and so on.
This school mentioned, the very first thing they mentioned was their focus on mathematics and science, and how that was a critical focus area for their school. They also mentioned their high-quality staff. They said they felt that the staff that they recruit and the extent to which they engage with their population helps them achieve, but also helps them overcome some things that may be seen as challenges, but they use them to their advantage. And we do see, again, this focus on personalized instruction, that we have, we can do what the student needs, we can identify what they need effectively, and we can reach them in a way that's most effective for them.
And here are their trends. Our next is a public school academy, Detroit Service Learning Academy in Detroit. This one is K-8 schools in large cities. Their foundation allowance around 7,650, a little higher than normal, but their peer group is also a little higher than normal. Their enrollment is around, their peer group is around 700, although this is an 1,128-student school. This is a big school, K-8 school. Around 99 percent minority, very high economic disadvantage, a little high on the students with disabilities, and very few limited English proficient. But if you look at their, I somehow got the wrong thing in there. They also have very high proficiency rates compared to the remainder. I can show you what their trends are. Here are their trends, and what I can tell you is that the trends for similar schools are actually much lower over time.
I had the privilege of doing this interview myself. As Joseph said, many of my staff and other staff in DAA did a lot of the interviews, but I had the privilege of doing this one, and it was, it was just really exciting to talk to this gentleman. The very first thing that he said is, it's expectations, it's all about high expectations, and excellence is in our DNA, is the school's motto. And so they, a threat of high expectations was throughout everything he said in the interview, that they expect a lot of their staff, their students, their board members, their community, everybody has high expectations. They also have an extensive integrated service learning program that helps them not only connect their curriculum to applied action, but helps them focus on, at the same time, character education and contributing to the community as citizens and scholars. And finally, they view their teachers, they have high-performing staff, but they also view it their mission to help their teachers become experts, to engage in a love of learning and harness that to become an expert at education. So they spend significant resources and time on professional development, technology for professional development, and things to help their staff not just become trained, but really become leaders.
Again, you've seen the trends.
Do you know who authorizes this school?
It is...
Who is the authorizer?
That's a good question. We'll find out.
We'll find out, and we'll get that.
Is this the address on Seven Mile Road? I believe.
I think so.
Violet Loser?
And our next is Granville West Elementary School, Granville Public Schools in Tint ISD. Now, this is a K-6 school in a suburb of Grand Rapids, and this is a school that typically would be expected to perform relatively well, but they're outperforming even those relatively high expectations. Their peer group, suburb of a large city, K-6 schools, K-5, 6 schools. Again, state foundation allowance a little above average, enrollment around 400, minority relatively low, economic disadvantage 37 percent, students with disabilities a little high over what's average, and LEP pretty low. So what you see here is the expectations are indeed relatively high, given their peer group, their peer group performance is relatively high already, but they are outperforming that significantly. And again, I want to point out the writing. The writing, again, it's not just that it's happening in everywhere where they've had an opportunity to take the test year over year. This is happening again in writing.
Just to backtrack slightly and answer, Jen helped us, the authorizer for Detroit Service Learning Academy is Lake Superior State University. So, Lake Superior State, yep.
Just south of Anderson.
Yep. And they also talked about their site-based instruction in their interview. But with this particular school, with Granville West, to pull out a couple highlights from their interview, they were really, really felt it was important that they had a safe and collaborative learning environment where students felt like they could come and learn in a way that wasn't threatening. So they had, they mentioned their positive behavior support plan to ensure that all students felt, felt safe and protected at school. They also, they mentioned specifically response to intervention again, and this focus on differentiated instruction, and identifying measurable targets for each student and resetting the targets as necessary. So targets that can be reached so then they can be reset. And they, they also felt that they had total focus and dedication from their staff, from the community, from the students, and that teacher leaders were a really critical part of that, that it wasn't, again, like the previous school, wasn't just about training staff, but really growing staff to be leaders and to provide a vision for the school.
And here are their trends. Our next school is Benzie Central Senior High School in Benzie County Central Schools, Traverse Bay Area ISD. This, the comparison group for these, for these schools are remote rural high schools. State foundation allowance around 7,400, enrollment around 350, minority around 8 percent, education... education, economic disadvantage around fifty-four, students with disabilities around thirteen, and LEP around one percent. So that's their peer group. Here is their, here are their outcomes. And you can see that their outcomes in this high school are generally significantly better than the outcomes in their peer group. For high schools, we had those, we had the percent meeting the ACT benchmarks. We have the percent proficient on the MME, and we have the four-year graduation percent and the four-year cohort dropout percent. Of course, for the four-year cohort dropout percent, we're looking for a lower number than the peer group. And as you can see, they do have significantly better outcomes than their peer group on all of those things.
This school spoke immediately and very frequently about the importance of data. Data to drive instruction, data to help all students learn and ensure that all students are challenged, and then the importance of their school improvement plan and how it is really followed. And data is used to develop it, and then data is used to revise it each year, and how it's really a living document for them that's important to their work. They also, and there were, this Traverse Bay ISD deserves special recognition here because they got very good comments throughout the interviews from their districts and schools saying the ISD just really supports us, provides really excellent support for our work. This district, or the school also, and the district that it's in collaborates to provide services. So I know that's something, especially in rural areas, that's necessary, and they felt that helped them ensure that students could have, you know, access to opportunities that might be more difficult to provide without collaboration. And then they spoke about their building leadership and the community leadership, and the pride that the community takes in the students, and how important that is for their success.
And here are their trends over time. Our last school is, yes.
How can, I guess I'm a little confused. The writing's been in place for high school longer than it has for...
Yes, the writing's been in place.
Okay, that's why, okay, got it. Thank you.
And on the slide before this, can you address the difference between the ACT scores and the MME scores? Because they're pretty...
Yes, the ACT, as we've talked about before at the board, the cut scores for the Michigan merit examination are basic high school skills, cut scores, whereas the benchmark scores in, on the ACT reflect readiness for success in a first credit-bearing college course, freshman course in college. So, the difference in the rigor of those scores is significant between the ACT and the MME.
And I just want to underscore that because this is what we're going to be seeing next year. What you're going to be seeing is the ACT scores and not the MME. And it was so important that we change those cut scores when you see something like this, it makes a lot of sense.
We're going to see things that are more similar in terms of the percents meeting or percents proficient to what we see with the ACT rather than what we currently see with the MME. That's correct.
You know, while we're on that specific point, I found in going around, in my work going around the state, that people are less freaked out about the cut scores when they realize that we're also going to provide the prior year's scores as if the cuts had been in place. So in other words, they're going to still be able to see a growth trend. And even though a lot of those we're watching are up here, they'll be down further, but it'll be this way. You know, at least, hopefully it'll be this way. But it won't be because of, you know, so that fear that it's up here and then jumps down. I mean, I think that's going to help people understand that number one's the right thing to do to get this to be career and college ready. But also that you're going to be able to show your community that you're still on the right path.
All right, our last school is Cassidy Middle School in Tuscola ISD. This is middle schools in rural areas near an urban fringe. What does that mean? We actually use the National Center for Education Statistics locale codes. This means that they're not right there in the suburbs, they're just outside the suburbs in a rural area. That's essentially what that means. State foundation allowance around seventy-four hundred, enrollment around four twenty-five, economic disadvantage around fifty-four percent, students with disabilities around thirteen, and LEP around one. So this is the peer group for this set of, for this school. And again, what you see is you see that they are outperforming their peer group in every measure. And we saw this across the board in every single school that came up as beating the odds on both lists. They did outperform their peer group on every measure. It wasn't pick and choose something, it was every measure.
To quote the ISD superintendent, "This school has a razor-sharp focus on student achievement." And that's why he felt, at least, they're performing so well. And they do that in large extent through their use of data and strong staff buy-in to the concept of using data to drive instruction and assessment and targets and those things to ensure that students are getting what they need when they need it. The school is also collaborative with good leadership and very much willing to grow its professional expertise of its teachers through professional development. I thought it was interesting to note that they specifically spoke about they have a daycare and a preschool that they make available to the community to prepare more students for kindergarten. So they come in with that kind of kindergarten readiness that we've come to know is so important. And again, the extended embedded community support in this school and how critical that was for their learning.
And I do want to highlight a couple of things that came out in many, many of the interviews. Vanessa's already touched on several of those things. Response to intervention, that came out in many interviews. Response to intervention, RTI. Individualized instruction came out in many interviews. Staff being willing to provide a professional development for staff came out, and really significant respect for the staff that work in the school came out in many of those interviews. Another thing that came out in many of the interviews was that they do benchmark testing, maybe improvement benchmark testing to monitor the progress of where their students are. And they provide those individualized goals and monitor those goals, get students to those goals. And they focus on data analysis. So those were, if I could pick out some themes that came out from most of those interviews, those would be the themes that I would pick out. Those are things that these schools are doing, and they are committed to doing that. So here are the trend data for this last school. Mike?
So, I mean, our intent in presenting this is to, first of all, there's a tendency, I think, because of our focus on school improvement, to look at schools sometimes that aren't doing as well. I think that's why front-page stories sometimes are about schools that maybe aren't. And this is an opportunity to show lots of schools are doing very well. And then maybe give a target for similar schools to say they can aspire to that and interact with those particular schools to figure out, what are you doing? What's the magic that you have? And you heard some of the trend. We also thought that this would begin to start providing data. It's one of the rich parts of having data available for other groups, for grad students, for universities, for ISD assessment folks to study and think about in their own way, and drill down and try to draw these same conclusions. So, opening up to board members, I know you've been interacting, but continue. Nancy, then Kat, please.
I have to say it's ironic that yesterday, no, it wasn't yesterday, take that back, Sunday, I spent an hour on the phone with an individual who was very concerned that we didn't know, we weren't doing anything about schools that were doing well, that we weren't focusing on them, and that we weren't using them as role models to know what to do. And I assured them that we had that on our list to look at, and that if they kept on looking at our board meetings, that would come up with it. And that invited him, I don't see him here, invited him to come today to hear this report because I think this is very, very essential. One of the questions I had was, are any of these schools in our financial group of having problems financially?
Only one, Detroit.
All right. So, this goes to show another point that you don't, you can do these wonderful things, you can really attend to what students' needs are. You can highly, you can look at individual needs on a regular basis. You can have a highly involved community, you can have a highly involved group of mentors and volunteers in the school, and it doesn't cost a lot of money that puts you in financial distress. Not to say that that happens with every school all the time. I'm just saying that I think it's important that we recognize that this is a key element to the success and that I would encourage all of our districts, all of our communities to become part of the solution for their schools by becoming engaged and involved because, boy, that's a key element that I saw in here.
And then Kat?
Yeah, that's interesting because I was going to focus on that, too. If you remember, one of our task forces years ago, we had the five areas, the teachers, the principals, the technology, early childhood, and school community involvement and relations. And it's so important, it really does help. But it's also focused on the teachers and their professional development. And it seems to me that they're doing the kind of things that I've been hearing in the study group that I'm on at NASB, that, you know, we've said this for a long time, the old-fashioned speaking to teachers at a one-day workshop doesn't really do the trick. But working as a team collaboratively in the school is the way to go, and they seem to be doing that in these schools. That's really critical. So I'm really glad to hear this. There's also, I've been talking for a long time about wanting to keep blue-ribbon schools so we would focus on excellent schools. And we use these as the new blue-ribbon type schools, if you want to call it that, that these schools are doing a good job, and we ought to really recognize them publicly in their communities.
That's a good idea.
I think...
And we could name it the B and A at schools.
You know, we could go get them a certificate or something. It gets publicity in the area, and they get some recognition and...
That's a great idea.
So, I think that would be, because this is the kind of thing we really have to do, focus on what's working. And I think I'm glad to hear this, that we're doing that.
John, please.
Similarly, I thank you, staff and all, for shining a spotlight on these schools, and really want to applaud these schools as examples of creating the conditions. I think their self-description of what the attributes are that allow them to organize for success, you know, are the most telling and powerful pieces of this puzzle. And, you know, I think there's a threshold belief set that we need to keep reinforcing, and that's that all kids can learn in spite or despite their families aren't what they should be, or they're poor, or whatever. It's easy, and I think many times we hear, we can't educate these kids at the same high levels because they don't have those attributes. And if we believe that, then we're done from the get-go. That doesn't say it's not really hard, but it does say that schools can create conditions if they're supported for the long term and the teachers are empowered and they're well-led, that schools can beat the odds as these are showing. So I think it's important that we use these as examples that it is possible. And it doesn't appear like they get more money than their peers. I mean, I was just asking the point. They have somehow managed to have good leadership and self-organization that allows them to deliver the goods in spite of obstacles, which is really important. But I did want to ask, are there, it seems like it does get tougher at the middle and the high school level, the fact that there aren't as many schools at the high school level. All the reasons why kids might fall out, drop out, or not succeed compound. And so I really want to acknowledge there are real conditions that make it tough to beat the odds. But do you have a similar observation? I mean, are we, is it, are we seeing relatively few high schools and middle schools that organize well to succeed at this kind of level?
So, the answer to that is, it's a little nuanced in that high schools and middle schools did show up on both of the studies. Only one high school and one middle school showed up on both. So that doesn't, so we were just being very careful to capture only those that showed up on both. I think, though, that you could say that some of the schools that showed up on one of the studies versus the other, you could probably also call them schools beating the odds. But we didn't profile them here simply because we wanted to be extra sure that we were capturing only those that showed up on both sides.
Mary Ann, and Richard, and Nancy.
I want to thank you all, too, for monumental amount of work you've done on this. And I think something not directly said, but that has to be included here is the fact that this does not happen in any of these schools without strong leadership at the top in the schools. I mean, you don't have a commitment to collecting and using data and making sure all the teachers are collaborating together without that strong leadership. I think we have to always keep that in mind, too.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is a celebration of teachers and principals and everyone who joins together. Richard, please.
I, I won't repeat everything Mary Ann has said, but I certainly agree with it. And I appreciate this study. What's given attention tends to increase, so I think just the act of the study is helpful. At the same time, just because two or more elements are associated does not mean that there's a cause and effect relationship. And I'm saying this more for our board members than for those of you that work with statistics. And there are certain things that are inherent in the mathematics. For instance, in why are there more elementary schools than high schools? Because when elementary schools, when you test elementary schools, the kids are much closer together. It's like the beginning, it's like a horse race. On the first lap, no one is more than a lap, no horse is more than a lap behind. When you get to the eighth lap, some of those horses are three or four laps behind. The spread between the students is much greater the more years you go. And that's why it's so much harder to have uniform success in high school than it is on the elementary, on the elementary levels. So we've got to be aware of the math patterns that lie behind some of this, some of this kind of thing. If we were to survey, if we were to, for example, in health, you know, we identify the number of kids that get sick with a cold and so on and so forth. If we were to survey the kids that were not sick and ask their parents, what did you do to keep your kid from getting sick? We'd get a lot of interesting answers, like, you know, I get vitamins every day, I never go out with a cold or something like that, that may not explain why some kids got sick and other kids did. And I'm just saying that this is a great start, but we need as much data and a careful thought that we don't jump to conclusions.
That's a really good point. By the way, why we would also invite, as I said, ISDs, grad students, universities to try to mine this also in ways that would give us deeper understanding. I think those are excellent points. I think it was Nancy.
I think to add on to what Richard said, I think the other piece I think is so apparent about high schools and middle schools versus elementary schools, not only this horse is lapping, but also it is indicative of education and how too often, too quickly, we change our direction. And there are very few of these schools, in fact, there are none of these schools, who have had our K eight content expectations and our high school graduation requirements in entirety with their demographic of their groups. But the groups that are in eleven-twelve, ten-eleven-twelve right now did not start in kindergarten with those K eight content expectations. And until we get a complete cohort through there, I think you're going to see even greater disparities. I'm not saying disparity will disappear. I think there'll be greater disparities until we do that. And it encourages me to please stay the course and not change midway. If we really want to see kids have a chance at achieving at high levels, we have to stay the course and not go backwards on what our content expectations are. So I think that's another key piece to middle and high school is that kids who have had the opportunity to start out with rigor and go all the way through to twelfth grade are going to be far more likely to be successful than kids who started midway.
Elaine, please.
I'm heartened by the fact that we do have elementary schools that are doing so well because, as we all know, you have to have some base to build on. And the Anne Arbery Public Schools looks at each child's performance as fitting within a year and a half developmental range in K through five. I don't know how many schools have that, you know, that spread. But, and I can't tell you where the meat tests within what Ann Arbor thinks is a reasonable developmental spread. But I agree with the horse lapping, but I also know that within that first, those first five, first six developmental years, that is a wide range of kids at each point that you look at. But the biggest thing for me is, I would love to follow these kids, or I would love to follow, if there's any way to do it, to see what happens with the middle school for these elementary children. these elementary children. And my last point would be that the behavioral characteristics, again, we recognize that we can't tell exactly what leads to all of the achievement that we're seeing, but the behavioral characteristics seems to have some commonality, just as you summarized in these five or six points. And if it's possible on the website, revelation of all of this data, to say, "These were the common aspects that we saw in our interviews," I think that that would be statistically appropriate and would be helpful to some schools if they looked to see what kinds of things they need to do.
The technicals.
Yeah, now, you know, this is so heartening to me as well as a teacher, you know, and one of the things I'd like to caution is, you know, that this is a great example of how, you know, success can be used as a benchmark, rather than creating artificial benchmarks for everybody to try to meet and then watch everybody fall off. And so I'd like to just encourage the system to just, to create data collection tools that are in line with the objectives of the schools, which is to create individuals who will then have, go on to have a good quality of life and be able to be of service to our state. And so sometimes because of the data collection tools are not in tune with that, just trying to reach that data, or trying to meet that data becomes the, one of the obstructions to having a quality school. And so I'd just like, from a teacher's point of view, just keep that in mind, please.
To build on that, that's why I was encouraging in the beginning that had, were I to be a local superintendent again, and the schools I had, the dialogue among teachers between schools that are in these different stra, I can't overemphasize, because then you start to get at some of the things that the data doesn't really project. And you, ultimately, this is a people business, and you forget that. The data helps inform it. I mean, I think it's a way of life across the board, sports figures, you know, how many home runs have they hit and all that, that doesn't necessarily mean what's made them a great player, you know. So I just think this is a great start. I appreciate the board recognizing that, and I think we will look for more opportunities to be positive and constructive, too. We are ready, I'll just say this, though, in our meetings yesterday, we're ready that some people will be, "Well, why didn't I make that list?" You know, it's just part of the human nature to some degree, and that's why we thought we would put the two complete lists out. And then it doesn't mean there isn't, there aren't folks that are close to that list, and they need to, but I think there's a fine line between contrasting a couple of the news articles a month or so ago with the low-performing schools and the ones that didn't have kids making college ready, but also trying to say, "It's not like public ad isn't doing its work," and there's so many fine examples where it is. And then even within a school, let's say, that maybe hasn't made this list, we also have to remember, as you would know, that there are teachers in that school that are having great success, their overall numbers may not be where they want, but an individual teacher down card or X is really doing a heck of a job. And so we'll just keep plodding along on this. Thanks, guys, great work. Met your timelines, unbelievable, especially with that plane problem you had. And then, now, we're contrasting it with the district's deficit status. This is our next. But part of this, we do think will align.
The others beat the odds. These are the odds.
But, you know, I think what we wanted to do today in this item, and when we talked about it with the board at agenda planning, is a couple of things for perspective. I'll let Carol and Dan and Jeff join us for a moment. Perspective, I would ask us to understand, first of all, is that 95% of our school districts have a fund balance. What that will be a year from now, based on when the politics is done, of what cuts will really be. You know, and we all know that the governor proposed cuts, there's a legislative process. So those numbers are likely to go up by next year. But what we also wanted to demonstrate is, within those, they're doing what they need to do. I mean, districts have for years been doing what they need to do to take care of their deficits. And they get at least two years, and then more often than not, I have authority to sign off up to five years to get their deficit reduced, and we've done that with some regularity. And the reason I'm saying this is, I'm sorry, maybe belaboring this today a little bit, but I, as a local superintendent, had a $6 million cut mid-year, and have that still with clarity in my mind, how painful that was. We were even at a point where we were having to lay off teachers mid-year, rearrange classes, you can imagine the disruption. A third grader has to teach her part of the year, not the rest of the year. So one thing I would say that we've gotten better at as a state is understanding as soon as we can the problem, not mid-year. Fewer of those issues the last decade or so. Nevertheless, it's a lot harder to do now than when I was a superintendent. I mean, it's a lot harder to do. So I thought today what we would do is, with Carol and Dan and Jeff, try to give a little bit of a sense of what that's like, also maybe to take and minimize some of the fear that I think is out there, that, "Oh, my gosh, how are we going to cope with this?" It doesn't mean it's not going to be easy, rather than it's not going to be hard, it will be hard, but that there's evidence of where this has been done regularly. So I'm going to turn it over to Carol at this point.
Good morning. We were excited to have this item follow the beating the odds because what we're going to talk about a little bit, as Mike said in his opening comments, are those districts who, 95% of them who have beat the odds and are maintaining some financial control, some more than others. We'd also like to talk a little bit about that list of 43 deficit districts, and just to put aside some of the rumors, the list of 43 districts is the only list that we have. There's no list of districts that might be potentially bankrupt, or no list of districts that might be in line to have an emergency manager under the new law. This is the list of districts that we are working with currently. And what Dan and Jeff are going to do is talk about those districts a bit in general, but more importantly, talk about where their status is, our process with deficit districts, because I think it's really important for all of us to understand that while it is time-consuming, we're giving a lot of technical assistance and our own staff's expertise to help those folks as they work through those local decisions that make sure that districts move forward. And finally, to talk a little bit about the requirements that we have to impose on districts because of what's required in the law.
This is 848 districts, include the public school academies?
Yes, it does. I'd like to turn it over to Dan Hanahan, who directs our Office of State Aid and School Finance, and then Jeff Kolb will be assisting with the presentation. And Jeff has been a real godsend. Jeff is working specifically with our deficit districts so that we can get a handle on that, as well as the budget transparency piece that's up on the district website. Dan?
Thanks, Carol. We started off, in the school year ending June 30, 2010, we had, say, 848 education entities that we've mentioned. That's LEAs, local districts, public school academies, and the 57 intermediate school of districts. And, you know, the good news is, as Mike and Carol have pointed out, you know, that 95% of those districts, you know, 805 of them, ended the year with a positive fund balance. In our office, you know, we spend an inordinate amount of time maybe, you know, dealing with the 43 districts that ended in a negative fund balance, and we forget, I think, to focus sometimes and concentrate and mention that, and remember that 95% of them, that means 95% of them, ended with a positive fund balance. So it shows us, I think, that, you know, no matter how tough the economic times have been, and how tight the K-12 budgets have been, and they've been somewhat tight in the last few years, there have been some cuts, $170 a student this year, $154 a student last year, that districts, you know, by and large, do make some tough decisions out there and are fiscally responsible. They do end up the year with a positive fund balance. We've heard a lot, I think, Mike mentioned it, that, you know, we've heard a lot about, you know, the governor's proposal for a 300, an additional $300 per student cut, an additional $230 a student, and additional retirement costs. And so some people are predicting that, you know, maybe hundreds of districts could be in a financial difficulty, you know, next year. We've done just some rough and dirty, you know, looks at some of the data, and we've looked at what that would mean to some districts, and if they did like a 10% cut to their non-instructional costs, just a 10% cut to non-instructional costs, and that was one proposal, you know, that's been put out there. There would probably be another 60 districts that could end up, that would have to do more than, than a 10% cut to their non-instructional costs. But we know from history that they'll do it. By and large, they will do that. They'll do what it takes because they have, you know, each and every year, we just don't end up with the number of districts that people always predict, you know, will be in a deficit. So I think, you know...
You're saying another 60 districts, approximately?
We'd just have to do additional cuts, more than the 10% that, you know, has, above and beyond the 10% of non-instructional costs, you know, so there's plenty of room there for additional, additional cuts, you know, to stay solvent. The next slide is just a graphic representation of what happened between 2009, during the 2009, during 2010. We had 41 districts that ended the year in 2009 in deficit. Eight of those emerged from deficit, 10 new ones went in, so we ended up with 43 entities in deficit. Turned out that seven of those 43 were public school academies, none of them were intermediate school districts, so the other 36 were local districts. Two of the seven academies have closed, so we're really back to monitoring 41 districts. Two of those academies didn't open their doors this past fall. Statutory language in Section 102 of the State School Aid Act requires districts that end the year in a deficit to file a deficit elimination plan. And Mike mentioned that those plans are supposed to come out of deficit in two years. That's the, what the law says with the ability for the state superintendent to grant extensions to that two-year period. We actually have approved 37 now. 37 of those deficit elimination plans have been approved. We have four districts that don't have an approved deficit elimination plan. Two of those are, just because the board hasn't approved it in the board meeting for those two districts as of today, that we'll be down to just two districts that don't have an approved deficit elimination plan after this evening, provided that those boards approve those deficit elimination plans as they are projected to do. Mike mentioned he can grant extensions to that two-year deficit elimination plan. Our policy has been to grant no more than three additional years. And we kind of piggyback off the language in Section 15 of the State School Aid Act. That's a section that deals with school districts who, as a result of an audit done by or on behalf of the department owes state school aid fund money back. And if they do, and if they claim it would be a hardship to pay it all back in one year, that section gives us the authority to grant up to five years to pay that back. So we just run along with that same kind of rule of thumb for these deficit elimination So this next screen is just a bar graph showing that, of those plans that we've approved now, we do have some out to four and five years. And do you want to give us, as Carol did, Jeff, kudos for spending the time, a lot of time reviewing and working with the districts to get those plans approved. It's not as simple as it might seem when we get plans, you know, we do review them with a pretty fine-tooth comb to make sure that they're reasonable and, you know, that they comply, furthermore, that they will comply with those plans. But I think, you know, some of the severity of, if there's any bad news in all of this, I think it's that the severity of some of the deficits has grown, and that's why, as a result of that, for those that are in deficit, a few of them are in fairly severe shape, and that's why we've had to grant those additional four and five-year plans. We did recently, on, I think it was March 31st, the last SOUPSCROOP meeting, adopt some new requirements or procedures related to our deficit elimination plans. These requirements align more with the State School Aid Act, that, you know, it really does say that we're not supposed to pay any further state school aid until a district does have an approved deficit elimination plan. And so we've clarified, and we've sent this out to districts statewide, a communication of these new requirements, and that it clarifies when state school aid will be withheld. You know, in the past, we've probably been somewhat lenient in regards to that part of the statute, and what we decide or determine, I think, is that when we do that, sometimes it enables the district to dig themselves a little bit further into deficit so that we really do need to follow the letter of the law and follow these little bit tougher requirements here.
Dan, I may say, when we had this discussion at SOUPSCROOP, one of the reasons, this may sound a little condescending, but we thought we need to encourage as much as possible that boards and administrators do this themselves, especially with the severity of the new EFM law, and encourage them to do what they need to do to get this taken care of, and then they won't have to worry about any EFM, or I guess they're called EMs now, and some of the parts of that that seem overly severe. Keep your destiny your own, and as long as they can do this and do it in a timely way, they'll be fine. And districts are doing this, they're stepping up and doing what they have to do. And I think in the cases where we've done the five years, it's because they do have circumstances that they just can't get this resolved more quickly. We always appreciate the ones that come in right away with a plan that says, "Hey, we're going to get this done in two years," and they know how to do it.
When we do approve a plan, they usually have, they always have a couple of standard contingencies. One is that the district will continue to report to us on a monthly basis, a budgetary control report. This is required actually in statute in the law. And what that does is tell us what they've spent to date and what they're projecting to spend, and it compares it to their budget, you know, so that we can see if they're in line, you know, with their deficit elimination plan. And also, if they happen to adopt, and they do during the course of the year, adopt an amended budget, and if that budget deviates materially from the plan, then, you know, we need a revised deficit elimination plan if they're going to revise their budget, you know, to that extent. The law also gives us the authority to implement or impose some, what they refer to as special conditions. An example of that would be like, if a school district built into their deficit elimination plan strategies that they were going to reduce expenditures due to consolidating services with the city or a school, with their ISD or something, then we ask for them to show us some memorandums of understanding. An example would be, we'd ask for them to do that, you know, to show us that they're actually making progress on consolidating those services. Sometimes there are some hurdles, you know, to get over in approving these deficit elimination plans. Sometimes districts come to us because they're having some issues at the district, you know, getting the plan approved, and sometimes we have issues with the plan. When that happens, we do call a meeting of the players involved. We bring in, you know, the superintendent of the district, we bring in some board members of the district, we bring in their union representatives, staff from the ISD, the business manager, and staff from our office, Carol and Mike. You know, Carol's and Mike are generally in that meeting as well. And the intent of those meetings are to basically get us all on the same page, all pulling in the same direction, and understanding, you know, what our next steps need to be. And so when we do that, what we wanted to do here was to show you some of the roles and responsibilities that we go through, you know, with the staff that we bring in. We start off by going over the language in the State School Aid Act that, you know, prohibits a district from even, not just incurring a deficit, but actually adopting a deficit budget. Both of them are against, against the law, really, they're against the statute. And that statute does require us to withhold state school aid, you know, if you don't have an approved deficit elimination plan, and that there's a two-year time limit unless the superintendent grants an extension. We also go over language in the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act that is very... We also go over language in the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act that is very similar to the language in the, in the State School Aid Act that says a local board is not to adopt, you know, a deficit budget. Furthermore, it says that administrators of the school district are not to incur an expense that would exceed a line item in the budget. And then furthermore, they're not supposed to incur an expense, either a board member shouldn't authorize one, or administrator shouldn't incur an expense on a line item that isn't even in the budget. And of course, that's where, that's how school districts get in deficit. You do that by spending something that you don't have budgeted, you know, that you exceed your budget. Those are actually things that are against the law. And the big one here, I guess that's why it's on its own slide, is that, you know, it's the school boards and the administration that have the responsibility for allocating financial resources and human resources to meet their, their objectives, their fiduciary responsibilities there at the district. Then we go over our responsibilities here at the department. You know, we do have to develop those procedures and forms. We have to review those deficit elimination plans. We do reasonableness checks. Just to oversimplify, if they said they were going to lay off three people and save a million dollars, that wouldn't be reasonable, and we would reject, you know, that plan. We, we review those monthly budgetary control reports to make sure that they're on track, you know, to, to eliminate that deficit. We do have to, on occasion, and we have enforced the penalty of withholding state school aid. There is a report required to the legislature that we file on the status of deficit districts, and that also comes to the, the board as well. And we stress that, you know, we do not make the decisions for them. We can help them. We can tell them, without some other districts have done, but really, they have to make, you know, it's local control state, and they make the decisions on how they're going to reduce expenditures or possibly even, in some cases, increase revenue, especially if they can draw students back to their district.
I'm going to, personal privilege here, reemphasize that. And this is where my daughter is still answering questions as a teacher, that why is your father saying there should be sixty kids in a classroom? That was not my call. We don't have the authority to make that call. That came in one deficit elimination plan. I don't think it's ever going to happen, by the way. I just think that was an interim measure that, well, in this case, it was Detroit. But it is discouraging when we do what you're, you're hearing today, but in the final analysis, we don't have anything to say about those components. And I'm never going to shake that label. I mean, I, I'm not kidding. I run into that everywhere. This is the guy that says there should be sixty kids in a classroom because it got out somewhere, it was inferred by Detroit, frankly. I'm going to just say it, it was inferred by the public relations machine in Detroit, and that's just not accurate. Once they have a balanced budget on their plan, then we're, we're required to sign off on it, and I did so. But I would not recommend that that's what I would have done had, had I been the person in charge there.
We find...
Well, we have one more thing.
Yes, please.
When you, when the staff meets with the local district and you talk about the plan, is it possible, for us, that for our staff to say, this doesn't look like a reasonable approach, why don't you try something different?
Yeah, we do some, some of that. You know, we, and we're certainly going to give them the benefit of the doubt. They know their district and their situation, you know, better than us. But if we know that, if it's obvious that that's just, you know, not going to be enough to eliminate the deficit, you know, generally, that would be the case, that, you know, what they're proposing is just not enough, you know, to get them out of the deficit. We're going to push them a little harder, you know, on that and draw that to their attention and so forth.
So, I mean, I think what Dan's saying, it might be that a figure says, we're going to save four hundred thousand dollars in transportation. And, and you look at it and just say, it doesn't seem reasonable. Your total budget's only four hundred and thirty thousand dollars or something, and you're not eliminating high school routes or something. So you'd be able to comment that that just doesn't look reasonable. But does, if it does look reasonable financially, you can't say to them, we can't say to them, you can't cut transportation. That's their call in the final analysis. It's just, is it reasonable what they're assuming the savings would be? That's why I was sensitive to the sixty. You know, what we do do, for example, though, is, I mean, we have districts currently of these forty-three where the common jargon is master's max for teacher salary. That's kind of the target that most teachers get to. It's fifty-one thousand in some districts, it's ninety-four thousand dollars in other districts. So there's obviously a wide span of options for those. Superintendent's, larger span, even take out Detroit with that salary. There's larger than two times the superintendent's salary in one district than in another district. Now, if I were a board member, I'd be looking at some of those factors just because, you know, as I said, there's, those are variables. I mean, in an ideal world, again, I guess probably selfishly, my daughter being a teacher, I think she should be paid a hundred thousand dollars a year with what she goes through and the kind of work she does. But given the fiscal issues that the board and the, and the staff need to deal with, that's quite a variety to go from fifty-one thousand to ninety-four thousand in districts that are all labeled to be in trouble. Well, they're all in trouble in different ways. That's why this is much more complex than just districts are going under, you know, for example.
Local board members might not have access, the local board member might not have access to that information. They do, they, they, well, that it's not given to them, they have to dig it out themselves somehow. The local superintendent doesn't tell them that.
Well, I'm, I'm not going to acknowledge that necessarily.
That's true. They don't, they, they not even know it themselves.
Well, you know, M A S B does, at least my experience in the past has been, M A S B has a pretty good service for showing these variables, and, and you hope that districts are availing themselves. And I, I'm not even inferring from that, that those should be the changes. It's up to them what they want to change. I'm just saying how much more difficult it would be if you're a fifty-one thousand dollar master max than if you were a ninety-four thousand dollar master max to make this work. And, and, or if you're superintendent's two and a half times what another superintendent is. That lower-paid superintendent is, it's harder to make an adjustment there. That's all. I'm not encouraging one or the other, but these are the things we do talk about at these meetings, and they have some sense of it. But I do think, you know, we are local control state. I, I, I think that is the right way to go. I think people know their own conditions better, they know their own community, and so even though we might offer suggestions in the final analysis, they, they make the call, and if the plan adds up.
This is if the sixty in a classroom potential, in that classroom of Detroit, it now comes out, it's always described as state mandated. State mandated because you just signed the letter saying they have to implement it immediately, this plan.
Right.
And I've just wondered if you, if the state, if the department couldn't have said, well, this is an unreasonable approach, try another.
No, we can't. I mean, I'm glad you keep clarifying it, but the answer is we can't. What we can say is we don't believe your sixty in a classroom adds up to the number that you say it adds up to. We don't think it's going to represent this eight million dollar savings or whatever. But the value judgments made by them, that's why Dan was saying, and, and that last bullet does not make decisions for the district related to their budget cuts. I mean, even Detroit, when, before a financial manager, there were parts of their plan that we were ready to sign off on, even though we wouldn't have necessarily as individuals agreed on. So this wasn't just whether it was the board three years ago, or whether it's the financial manager now, but if it's a plan that actually works, you're required to sign off on it and not make the budget. That doesn't mean we don't bring it up in the informal meeting.
But, you know, there seem to be, the Constitution says that we're, we're responsible for coordinating, supervising public education in the state. And you would think that that gives you some authority to say what you think is good, what you think isn't good, and the pros and just...
You guys want to help me on this? I mean, I, if anything, I'm trying to get rid of the image that I could do this because I really can't, but if we found a way...
I think, Kathy, we can say what we think is good. In this situation, you know, Mike's implementing a financial management provision which makes his decision, do the numbers add up? Are they credible? Not the value judgment on whether sixty kids in a classroom is the right way to educate kids. We need to be the ones saying, there's a better way to run the railroad in terms of the overall outcomes here. So I just think in this context, it's not the, the situation. And, and can I just say, I was going to make a couple comments. The, the, the emergent finance, the Emergency Management Act, while, you know, if, if this new act acts as intended, it will serve as this prophylactic vehicle to really helping more districts and all districts avoid the, you know, the nuclear option or the nuclear outcome of having an emergency financial manager, under which all these bad things and questionable things begin to happen. You know, the act has some legitimate, probably, concerns and provisions in it around collective bargaining and ending those things, which I have questions about too. But if, the real hope is that we don't, we don't see districts get into that situation, à la what we're doing with, with Robert Bob. But I, I am concerned, and I, do we have, it seems like we're going to end up with a lot of districts, maybe more, in this dialogue with us about trying to help them manage their deficit reduction plan. I really appreciate, Dan, you know, the work that you all and we are doing to help the districts plan, plan accurately, but, you know, do, do we have enough capacity? Do we need more staff in this department to implement for the ongoing bird dogging of this dialogue on how we can help them manage their, their deficit reductions plan, hoping to avoid the financial management implementation with all of its, you know, attendant potential bad stuff? So I just, I will name that concern. I, I think we're, we need to do this job well, and I, I know we're doing it as well as we can. I just hope we can have the ability to manage districts in deficit thoughtfully so that we can help them avoid these, these sorts of scenarios.
I mean, I appreciate your recognition of that, John. I, I think, just, number one, we haven't been approved for more staff, as you know. So if this goes to eighty next year, you'd spend probably half the time you spent when it was forty. So I think there is a trade-off there, and, and hopefully that can be resolved. There's some other areas that people are concerned we'd need staff. I mean, I'm not just saying this because of these controversies, but, for instance, we don't need any more staff because of my staff. That's, that's a reworking of existing data. But we do need more staff if we were to give this the same kind of intent. Having said that, we have to, you know, we're taking our cuts like everyone else, so I don't want to, I don't want to, especially since it's being looked at today, our budget, I don't want to look like we're lobbying for something at this point. But I, but I think it would be a legitimate issue if more and more of these come in that we'd have to try to make a case and, and hopefully be considered, because it's actually going to benefit the district more than it would benefit us. To Kathy's point, I think, I think, you know what I think I should do that would be helpful, and it would be in the spirit of what Kathy's saying, is maybe we can add a, I don't think there's any reason I can't add a paragraph to a letter that I'm writing approving this saying that, you know, especially when we feel that way, that these aren't decisions that we would necessarily make, however, in the, in the statute it requires, blah, blah, blah. I mean, maybe the overstatement of that is not...
That's a good idea.
Maybe that's...
It's a really good idea.
A little weaker than a signing statement.
Yeah.
No, I, I think that would be healthy and, you know, appropriate to Kathy's point, a legitimate point, that there's got to be a better way to do this. I also, on a lighter note, you know, I, I guess we'll know the cuts have gone too far when the ISD's, and ISD is in deficit mode. Is that, is that the tipping point we're looking for?
You know, this brings up an interesting point that I have, and I'm sure that I'm not alone, I'm sure we all deal with, with the public, that people say, well, you've got the constitutional responsibility for the direct supervision of all education. And I'm thinking, gosh, if that were just only true. There is a lot, and I just spent time explaining to someone earlier this week, that it isn't just the Constitution, but it's, it's legislation, it's the State School Aid Act, it's, it's the executive orders, it's the, it's the case law that surrounded the Constitution that determines how, in fact, this all plays out. Is there a place where we, you, all of us, can help people see this local control law? Because that's something that I run into all the time. Well, where is it? What is this local control law? Who says that's true? Does anybody know that?
I think one of the reasons we provided you with the, the copy of the slides that we use with local districts is to showcase, we could be more specific in that, those were just bulleted.
But where does local control come into the law?
We might have to talk to the AG. I'm not sure that I can quote you statute.
We'll get that for you.
It would just be helpful as we talk to people, if we can direct them to that, because I have, I run into a lot of people who are suspect of that and want me, want this board, me as a member of this board, but this board and the superintendent to just say, that's what's going to happen, forget all the other laws. And I'm thinking, yeah, it doesn't kind of work that way, but...
We'll get that for you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Well, thank you for putting this together. It's, it's very helpful. And the information that you sent to us before indicated that there were twenty-five that began with a deficit and ended with a larger deficit. And my question would be, is this because they're not following their deficit elimination plan, or are there other considerations that come into play?
That's pretty much it. They didn't follow their deficit elimination plan, or either they didn't plan enough for, you know, the cuts that did come, the hundred and fifty-four dollars in that case last year. They didn't get the students that they counted on, that's a big one, you know? That their declining enrollment was even greater than what they projected, you know, or some other expense. A lot of them could have a catastrophic type of expense, you know, maybe a boiler goes out or a roof repair that they didn't anticipate, you know? So it's a myriad of things that can happen, you know, that can cause it some of the better reasons than others.
So it is, I mean, there are things that happen that kind of impact that. Do the monthly reports they send to you indicate, give you an idea of the trend that they're on?
That's exactly what it's intended to do, and when they're open and honest in their reporting, and we can determine that, it does.
Okay. One more quick question. If a district has an emergency manager who comes in as a result of their situation, that emergency manager, true or false, is also held to the same requirements? They have to send monthly reports, do a deficit elimination plan?
True.
Okay. Thank you.
I risk belaboring the obvious here, but the essence of dysfunction in, in an organization is when people are not held responsible for the decisions that, that they made. And the, you know, blaming, blaming you for, you know, sixty students in a classroom is a classic shifting of responsibility. It's like the man who spends the week's paycheck on, at the bar, and then he comes back and runs into the guy who wants to collect the rent, and he says, we can't eat tonight because this guy took the rent. It's shifting responsibility. And I'm not saying that any of our districts have acted like drunken sailors in, in spending their money, but they have to assume responsibility and determine priorities. And in a shrinking economy, the question is whose ox is going to get bored, whose priority is going to get, and that leads to a lot of conflict. And when folks are conflicted, they'd really like to be able to find another person outside they can blame everything on separately. And we have to be careful that we don't enable shifting, in our attempt to be helpful, we could become, the state board itself could become an object of, for this triangulation. And to be very clear on borders, that is the responsibility, is the state boards, rather the district boards, have to determine priorities and spend their money accordingly. And there have been some districts that are so complicated that it's not known where the money is going, and my native district is, has been among them. And that's a tragic situation, but we have to, we have to deal with that.
Mary Ann, and then Eileen.
Oh, thank you. I was wondering, you said when you compiled this, it was not looking at the new law.
Right. The deficit district?
When you compiled your information here for your report.
The deficit districts are based on the State School Aid Act, and, and the deficit districts, if you're referring to the new emergency manager law...
Right, yeah.
We have, we have no lists at all. This, these forty-three are just based on the State School Aid Act, the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act.
So, maybe you don't know the answer to this, but I was wondering, since Mike... So, maybe you don't know the answer to this, but I was wondering, since Mike doesn't fit the emergency financial manager anymore, at what point?
Good job.
At what point does the situation with the deficit district go over to the governor's office?
The short.
How long do we hold on to it?
The short answer is that we don't send it. In the new law, there are 18 triggers, and one of those 18 triggers has to be enacted, and it could be anything from the local district issuing a request, a House or a Senate member, the local board. So, we don't send it. There's this whole list of 18 triggers. And I'm glad you brought that up, because there is on the Department of Treasury website an excellent Q and A for this new law. I've read the new law, but when I read the Q and A, it was really helpful what our colleagues put together over there. So, we'll get to that link before the end of the meeting.
You know, Mary Ann, in that spirit, I've said to our guys and to some outside folks that, I mean, I am selfishly happy to not be part of that. It's draining and I think, but what we are a part of, as you can see, is a very extensive process. And I think it would be, that I would be vocal if we felt there was a good faith deficit elimination plan that we approved, and somehow nevertheless, there was determined the need to be in financial emergency. I would, in my role anyway, not understand that disconnect. It wouldn't seem that.
It would be a big problem.
So, I wouldn't have control of that, but I think I would be vocal about that. And by the way, I don't think that's the spirit behind it. I don't see that in the governor's language. I don't see that, you know, just willy-nilly taking over. But I, just for the sake of discussion, if down the road that seemed to happen to District X and they have an approved plan, at least I'd be thinking out loud, "Well, what's the problem?" You know, the board's made the decisions they need to make. Now, there may be some, one of these 18, that I'm not giving enough thought to that would trigger it outside of a deficit elimination plan, but off the top of my head, I can't imagine what that would be. You know, it means they've got their house in order. So, I'm saying that, maybe I shouldn't say that, but I'm saying that to try to give.
Too late.
Too late. Well, to give some solace to districts that are fearful that there's an agenda. I don't believe that. I don't see it in the governor's office. I haven't felt it anywhere. But I would say, I would feel an obligation, a moral obligation, kind of, that if we felt they're on track, then what's this about a manager? You know, there may be some other condition that would present itself, but I don't know what that would be.
The trigger could occur at any point though, right?
It could, but the good thing about the new law is that it gives the district, in our case, so much more opportunity, because it calls for a preliminary review, where before, a review team went in and they made it. So, now there's this whole preliminary review that gives the district time to work with everybody. Then it goes, if necessary, it goes to a review team, and the district then has more time to work on it. And then, if the review team recommends, then there's all these other kinds of options that, there's recovery plans and operating plans and consent agreements in the new law before they ever get to an emergency manager. So, that's the encouraging part, that there's so much more time for the district to work with their local boards and whomever before a trigger or anything would send in that emergency manager.
That's why John's comment is correct, that this is almost more a way to prevent the idea that people would ever be in that spot. Eileen, and then Kath.
I'm really glad to hear that you're recognizing it being firm with districts is probably the best approach. We're the court of not quite last resort, now that the EM law is in place. I would just hope that every district recognized that this is a management issue, the local school board going to a superintendent, and it's something that has to be worked out with their governance, because if not, then it's all taken away. I'm wondering whether MASB can be brought in to the process on a formal or informal basis to try to help the boards strengthen their control with the superintendent and to get control of the situation. If we can only do the financial end of it, then that piece of trying to figure out what a better plan is for financial management is something we can't do. You can tell them what doesn't work, but you can't really help them figure out what would work. And I don't know whether MASB has any capacity to do that, but it would be a wonderful partnership opportunity for them to take a really proactive stance. And the reason I'm really glad that we're going to be firm is that the scuttlebutt has always been out there, that if you find a way to finesse the department, that you can get away with stuff, which isn't now going to happen with the Emergency Manager Act. It's just too dire a set of circumstances. As far as the local control issue goes, I'd love to see the Attorney General delve into that, because we're all faced, when we campaign and every other time we go out in public with discerning constituents, if you've got control, then why don't you have control?
Right, right. I get that question all the time.
Yeah, something odd, the good that's out there keeps us from even thinking about it, and it keeps the legislature from funding you to do something, from funding the department to actually make a difference. I don't know, it's easy for us to stand back and say, "We can't do that. That's local control." It makes it a lot cleaner for all of us, but it's not healthy, because at this point, we know a lot of things that can make a difference. Like, you know, 10 years ago, five years ago, when there wasn't good professional development, when we didn't have the options that we do now for districts to learn and to move forward, I would say that was a really good policy. But now, I'm not so sure. And I'm fine with MASB trying to do that sort of service, but we know things on a curriculum and instructional basis, that you're seeing things that work and that don't work. So, do we have a reason to delve into that? And if we do, the last point I would make is we have no funding and no capacity to do it. So, but the first step would be to try and get a legal opinion of what our responsibility actually is, given the constitutional mandate that the board and the department have.
Good point. Kath.
I wanted to ask another question about the 95% of the districts that have fund balances. It says in here that it's, tradition is that 15% is needed. It's good practice. What, do you know how many districts, or what percent of the districts actually have 15%? Or how close are they to 1% or 2%?
Right. We do have that data, and I don't have it at my disposal here this morning. I should have thought enough to do that, but we could get to that kind of strata, you know, where they fall.
Of course, that would make a big difference. Some of them might be close to the edge.
Yeah, and that's what we, when we did that analysis of, I mentioned that was kind of a quick and dirty one. We just took ones that were 5% or less of their operating expenses, and then looked at those and compared it if they spent the same.
So, that was where you came up with the 60 possible ones?
Yeah.
And you know, in the spirit of what Kath's asking, the other thing we do in our informal discussion is talk about other equity you have. For example, if you're, this is a good thing, but if you're fortunate enough to have a very low class size, particularly, and another district that we might meet with right after it does not, then one has more of an equity, if you want to think about it that way, in class size than the other one. If there's a district that's already has 20% co-pays for its employees and another one doesn't, in a way, there's an equity that one could work towards, you know, in the same sense, it's not on the bottom line, but.
It's not a simple figure, it's a revelation.
That's right. That's why these, and again, I'm not judging this, I'm just making the difference between 51,000 and 94,000, there's an equity in one in effect. And one other thing I want to say is, I'm always impressed, union leaders in these meetings, board presidents, superintendents, I mean, they're thoughtful, encouraging each other. I mean, occasionally, we had to close the doors, say, "We're leaving for a bit, work some of this out." But I mean, people in general are really working to solve the problem of their district and know it better than we do. So, in a way, I'm hoping the AG opinion comes out the way I hope it comes out, which is that we're not going to try to micromanage that. But I do think we do still, in many general senses, have, you know, the whole idea behind, you have local control, but the board should be able to say, and will in time be able to say, "Here's an accreditation standard we think you need to make. You decide how you get there, but here's an accreditation standard we think you should meet." That's a board's authority, you know, together with the legislature approving this, in Mises's case, or the course content expectations, or the new high school requirements. I mean, in a way, you're still supervising the general kind of progress of the system, but not necessarily in this micro way, which is done at the, in the PSA case, pretty much always at a building level, and in a district case, at a district level. So, I mean, I think that's the spirit behind this, and that's why the, frankly, the tools like Mises are important to have at least some impact on decisions that are made, even though it may not be drilled down to 4,000 buildings, you know, with individual decisions. Richard, please.
I forget, it was Proposition 9, that was the school funding law.
Proposition 9.
Proposition 8.
Thank you. Thank you. Scooby nailed me on that one.
Were you formerly from California?
Several, a number of our districts were held harmless and continued to get a lot of funding from extra funding, the other districts didn't, from property taxes. And I was curious, are any of the deficit districts affected by the fall in income from property tax? Or do we expect any of those districts to have trouble because of that?
You know, the State School Aid Act actually makes up the difference in the loss of property taxes, just by formula. But there are some, some of those hold harmless districts, or at least one prominent one that I can think of that's in that deficit district, deficit fund balance status. And they actually were hit, you know, fairly hard last year with the cuts, because in addition to the rollback in the, well, it wasn't a rollback in foundation, in addition to the $170 cut under Section 11D, they lost what was referred to as their 20J money. And some of that was pretty significant for some of those districts, so they did have.
Another reason why we have to look at the how schools are funded.
I would move that we let them finish their presentation.
It's really stimulating a lot of discussions.
Right. All right, you're good. Are you?
Well, we did have just one piece left.
Okay. Shows who's not in charge here.
It can be short.
Yeah.
No, we want to hear it.
This will be something for, that you can, you can use as you go out to visit districts, perhaps.
Yeah. We find out that districts are in deficit in two different ways. One is when they get their, when we get their financial report at the end of the year, but also if they happen to pass a, or adopt a budget that shows a deficit. And we find that out, because districts are now required to put a lot of information on the web. They're required to do so under Section 18 of the Act, requires them to put their budget on the web, pie charts of their expenditures by different functions, like instruction and maintenance and transportation, those types of things, their collective bargaining agreements, their salary data for anybody who makes over $100,000, and also for the superintendent, regardless of what he makes, and benefit costs and things like that. And Jeff was hired to, in part, to monitor those web postings as well, so that we can be proactive with districts who have an adopted budget and so forth. So, we thought you might like to see, hear a little bit about what he's learned in that analysis, and also show you a district, like to take you out to a district, a typical one, in case you'd like to do that for yourself sometime. So, Jeff.
Yes, Dan said, one of my charges was to look at all of the LEA and PSA websites to see how they were complying with transparency recording. And last fall, I did an analysis that, and it showed that 28% were fully compliant. 17% didn't even have the required icon that you need to click on to get to the information, so they were right away non-compliant. And the rest of them had an issue that they needed to clear up and they couldn't be compliant. After that analysis, we sent out an email to those 600, close to 600 districts that did not comply, and I got at least half of those emailed me back or telephoned asking, or working with me to try to figure out what was wrong, and as a result of that, many of them revised, if not all of them revised their website. Right now, we estimate that compliance would be more on 70%. I will follow up this spring, in a couple of months, to verify that. And as Dan said, we wanted to take you to a website to give an example of what it should look like. This is Mason County Central. You can see that they have the icon that the user can see easily. Just click on it, it'll take you to the reporting page. They have listed here the requirements under Section 18, so that the user can read and understand why or what is required. And if you scroll down, you can see that there are links to all of the required information. For example, there are 1011 budget. If you click on that, it'll bring you right up to the budget. They have, as Dan said, the pie chart with expenditures. You can click on one of those, and it'll bring up that pie chart. And I won't click on all of these, but there are the current collective bargaining agreements that you can click on and look at, as well as the audited financial statements for the period ended June 30th, 2000, that's a 45-page audited financial statement. And here are all of the benefit information that's required. And finally, there was the, you need to list employees with salaries exceeding $100,000, missing a couple zeros there, but in this case, I believe it was only the superintendent, and there's his information. And finally, there were some amounts that are spent on association or lobbying services. So, this district is a good example of what should be out there and how it should be laid out, and a good example of how it should look.
Jeff, can I mention that?
Yeah.
I think what we might want to do is, and we've kind of done, is give them the benefit of the doubt that there's a misunderstanding, blah, blah, blah. But I think if you're reviewing the spring of that 30%, that's not compliant, doesn't remedy it, I think John and I should probably co-sign a letter to the board president, the superintendent, and others, because, you know, if we're moving towards more of a, less of a top-down and more of a light-of-day way of thinking about things, then parents and everyone, employees of districts are entitled to know this. And, but I think after two years, you can't write it off as we misunderstood the law or whatever, especially so. It seems to me that 30% would give them another shot. But after that, we need to be more specific, because this is a good example of valuable information to people in a district. It gets a little bit of what Kathy said before, maybe to the degree that board members may not know, and for that matter, superintendents, union leaders may not know what it's like in other districts, they can go around and figure that out themselves. And it just seems reasonable that after a second try, yes.
I was just going to say that there's, legislators are starting to catch on to the fact that some districts are not complying, and so there could even be legislation where they're going to do something to try to make it stronger.
Yeah, well, maybe that's another, I mean, you always hope you can avoid that, but in this case, I think a letter from John, if you're one, we both, you know, if there's 3% left after that, that we have something to say.
Can you tell me what this, this letter, LEA?
Local Education Agency.
Any other ones?
Other comments?
Public School Academy.
I'd just like to reinforce that Marty and his team helped us design that logo. Every school district uses the same logo, so that when you go out there, if you see it, you know what should be behind it. You won't have to look for something else.
It's really unique.
He spent a lot of time on it.
You can tell we don't have a.
We don't have a graphic.
Sorry, I didn't mean that. Okay, cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very interesting.
Jeff, Dan, Carol, appreciate your efforts. Appreciate the board's questions, and hope that's a better understanding for you as more of these questions come out.
Thank you.
We're going to get in before lunch. This is.